Congratulations. United States of America, to your republic of which it stands, a nation under our head, in this long, with the great challenges of all.
My main one is that it's a little of a pledge.
Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of June sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Financials today include a supplemental preparation for Job and Family Services Public Assistance Fund for TANF or Social Service clients and the Summer Youth Program. Cash transfers out of the General Fund for OWGA debt payments for the water tower and the county water treatment plant and the local match portion of reimbursement number six for the airport FAA grant three three nine zero zero five four zero one seven two thousand and fourteen. The purchase order for Whitworth Bus Sales for the purchase of two two thousand and fifteen Ford E three fifty twelve passenger, two wheelchair location buses for the Transit Department in an amount of one hundred thirty-five thousand, five hundred ninety-four dollars. Travel request for the Department of Job and Family Services. We have payment number nine to Lakeland Management Systems for the County Engineers' Office Edition Building Project in the amount of seventy-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars. Payment number two to Miller Belders for the salt storage building project for the Engineers' Office in an amount of one hundred twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. And a payment to Bob Ross Buick GMC Truck for the state bid purchase of three GMC twenty-five hundred HD four-wheel died pickup trucks with piles for the Department of Water Resources in an amount of ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents.
And then on that transit there, they've actually got the grant that over.
The state pays for eighty percent.
Eighty percent over. But that's not our twenty percent. That's just a total amount and we give reimbursement.
Right, that's the total amount for the purchase.
I'll make those motions.
Second?
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Aye.
So the first thing that we have is an academic affiliation agreement with the University of Toledo. And what this is, there's a young lady, her name is Sarah, and she is going to be getting her degree in physical therapy. She has met with Sandy McLeod and actually observed some of the Parkinson's boxing as well as some of our other exercise programs. And she wants to do her internship with us. So this is an unpaid internship and she does receive compensation in form of a grade after her completion of the program. So we'd like to enter in the academic affiliation with that. It's an opportunity to teach.
Is this the first one of these that you're doing or do we have others in place?
We don't have others in place, but I'm hoping to get more in place.
Okay, okay. I mean, I think it's a great idea. I just didn't hear about it in the past, which may mean a whole lot. It just...
My background, I used to have a national internship program, so I was really used to working with different universities. And I mean, I think it's great when you can give field experience to young persons in the healthcare field or in human services field. So we're hoping to get some agreements on with some social services individuals so that we can, our professionals construct themselves.
Okay.
The Department on Aging is requesting the board approve and execute the academic affiliation agreement between the Jagger County Board Commissioners, Department on Aging, and the University of Toledo for the implementation of a student learning experience program internship in a related field.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
The next, the next five items are related to our Assistance Daily Living Program. That's the new name for our Homemaker and Personal Care Program. That is the program that targets geocas frail and providing in-home services to them two to four hours a week. This is a costly program, however, we have not increased the cost since our last contract. So the unit price, the amount of units, and the total cost does remain the same. We did go to bid. We received five bids altogether, however, one bid was incomplete. And that is number eight on the agenda. So I just wanted to make you aware that after speaking with the advisory board and staff, they did not attend the mandatory bidders meeting. And so we would like to request that we do not award them a bid because they didn't follow the proper protocol, even though they are an exceptional provider. They are a good, good community home care agency, but unfortunately, they just didn't follow the proper protocol.
That was number eight?
That's correct. So I wanted to make you aware of that before we awarded the bids to the other.
Are you planning on going back to them or is there a follow-up or are they out?
They do have some clients on our caseload at present. Their contract will be up August fourteenth, so I will be calling them after this meeting to let them know that because they missed the mandatory bidders meeting, that we did not recommend that they receive a contract. She was aware she missed the mandatory bidders meeting and, you know, I told her that she's welcome to submit a bid anyways.
Okay, so we're just gonna read the four, the five?
The Department on Aging is requesting the board award the bid to Hall Care LLC Doing Business Homes to Senior Care Services Incorporated for the Home Care Services Assistance with Daily Living Program for Jagger Residents age sixteen over for the period August fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen through August fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, in the amount of sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty units of service for the two-year period at a reimbursement rate of twenty-one dollars per unit for a total amount of three-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand, four hundred and forty dollars.
So move.
Second?
Sorry, we were gonna, we were gonna do all way down to eight together.
You're gonna do through eight?
Four, five, six, seven, and eight together.
I did not, I did not hear that, I'm sorry.
That's okay before I...
I withdraw my motion.
...farther, I would just...
I withdraw my motion. I...
The Department on Aging is requesting the board award the bid to Family Tree Home Care Services LLC for the Home Care Services Assistance with Daily Living Program for Jagger Residents age sixteen over for the period August fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen through August fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, in the amount of eight thousand, three hundred and twenty units of service for the two-year period at a reimbursement rate of twenty-one dollars per unit for a total amount of one hundred and seventy-four-thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. The Department on Aging is requesting the board award the bid to Cherished Companions Home Care LLC for the Home Care Services Assistance with Daily Living Program for Jagger Residents age sixteen over for the period August fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen through August fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, in the amount of eight thousand, three hundred and twenty units of service for the two-year period at a reimbursement rate of twenty-one dollars per unit for a total amount of one hundred and seventy-four-thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. The Department on Aging is requesting the board award the bid to Montefiore Home Care for the Home Care Services Assistance with Daily Living Program for Jagger Residents age sixteen over for the period August fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen through August fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen, in the amount of five thousand, two hundred units of service for the two-year period at a reimbursement rate of twenty-one dollars per unit for a total amount of one hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. The Department on Aging is requesting the board reject the bid from First Light Home Care for the Home Care Services Assistance with Daily Living Program for Jagger Residents age sixteen over if they did not attend a mandatory bidding.
Now I'll make those motions.
Second?
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello, Amy Kelly.
So we're on to Council Township Community Center, everyone. This is phase one and phase two. Phase three will be awarded once we have permission from Ohio Department of Transportation and State Department. But this is all of the other pieces of the project, the rehab of the building and the external gate ramp. So I'm asking for the, you know, this is an award, these are to Mark's Building Company that...
What involvement does Oda have in the parking lot?
Because part of the access is in the right-of-way and you just have to get them to sign off. And unfortunately, the engineer submitted his request, but he submitted it to the wrong division. So they caught the error in there. They think any day they'll get it from the correct division, so...
You didn't have to go to the EPA because of our inevitable waterway in the ditch, did you?
No, sir, we didn't.
Good. I was kind of worried about that.
Were you?
You're familiar with that, right?
Our wetlands?
The recent changes to the EPA rules in terms of our ditches becoming inevitable waterways so that they can oversee that.
For the ducks.
Yeah. And I'm waiting to see the downfall of that. It makes sense. All right, very good, thanks.
The Office of Community and Development is requesting to award the bid to Mark's Building Company for the Townsend Township Community Center Rehabilitation Project in the amount of two hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars for phase one on your allocation grant TF fourteen, one eighty-one, and one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and eight dollars for phase two, an alternate under revolving loan fund, wage funds, if they represented the lowest investment and further approved and authorized the President of the Board to execute the notice of awards.
Make that motion.
Second?
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
I'll take the next one. Number ten, we are asking for the board to approve and execute Resolution number fifteen zero dash, dash, zero eight zero, authorizing the board to apply for the CBT chief formula grant to come in year two thousand and fifteen. Also, we have the Housing, the HUD Development Applicant Recipient Disclosure Update Form, which is stating that we're not assisting for KMLJ or any personal housing or anything like that, we're not in any of those projects, and that our allocation amount is under two-hundred-thousand dollars, which it is. And the last form is the Environmental Review Documentation Certification Form. This is just stating that we do not want to do an environmental review for our general admin and our third housing part of the grant.
Questions?
Projects that you could decide and know if you wanted to...
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, that's...
Fine. I mean, I think we, I think we, right? I mean, you contacted us about prior opinions, right?
Exactly.
The public doesn't know.
Exactly. So if you want to...
So, yeah, go ahead. Do you want me to go ahead and bring it up? So we have a contract, just so everybody knows. All of us get, all of these contracts and so forth, had time to review, so we individually are pondering this, asking questions, so on and so forth. There are, what, five specific projects that we're looking at. One, the Jagger County Buildings and Grounds.
Oh, the admin.
The Jagger County Buildings and Grounds, there's been fifty-three thousand dollars allocated for that. The Department of Aging, forty thousand dollars. Jagger County Airport, thirty-one thousand dollars. Maple Leaf Residences, twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. Just the general administration officers, thirty-four thousand. So to make a point, as one of the good things, I think, that our Department of Development does is they scrutinize grants that we take very, very carefully and the obligations associated with those grants to minimize those obligations, which is very important in the game. And so very targeted in terms of our grants, dollars that we're taking. And that's a, they're worked very hard at that, and I think that's an important thing for the taxpayers, so. So with that said, any questions?
The Office of Community and Development is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution number fifteen dash zero eight zero, authorizing the President of the Board to, of Jagger County Commissioners to make application to the State of Ohio Development Services Agency for financial assistance under the State of Ohio's Community Development Blockment Program for Fiscal Year two thousand and fifteen Allocation Grant Program, and further approved and authorized the President of the Board to execute the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Application, this would be a disclosure update form and Environmental Review Documentation and Certification Form.
Make the motion.
Second?
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Very nice day.
She made, she found a mistake on it, so she's going to...
Good morning.
Good morning. Speak into the mic. Don't let that be friendly here.
Not a problem. We're here this morning to ask the Board Commissioners to approve the e-filing professional services software license and software maintenance agreements with Courtview Justice Solutions for the e-services grant funded program that will be initiated at court's.
The Commonwealth Court of Technology is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the professional services agreement, software license agreement, and software maintenance agreement with Courtview Justice Solutions for the e-services filing system in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars. The bid bond submitted shall be held to serve as a performance bond for this project.
Make that motion.
Second?
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
How many times have we been over here done for the same...
Oh, I'm doing this, thank you for coming.
Three times. I was disappointed about the government, the whole government process, you know, it's just...
Plenty.
But it's, what other reason would you have to come here and say, "I see you"?
Thank you. Thank you. We're good?
We're good.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Now we can get to work.
That's right.
We're excited about that. Yeah, thank you.
I didn't know you'd get music when you needed it.
I'm gonna dance.
Yes, the music, please, department. Old fanfare. Turn a roll, please.
I'm kind of shy. I am. Oh, I'm very sad. I have a resignation. This is the person that came and did her internship with us, and I knew it would be short-term, I just didn't know it was gonna be this short-term. I mean, this was like less than a month. But she was offered a place in a surgical pro, a ner, a surgical nurse program, and I'm not sure which hospital, but she'd been trying to get into it for two years, so I understand, but it's not very convenient for us. So can any of you guys work second shift? I'm really burned out.
Who's screwed it, how's that?
Yeah, yeah. That's all there is.
Okay.
The County Home is requesting the board accept the resignation of Kathy Hall, part-time attended third shift to be effective June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen.
So move.
Second?
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
This is supposed to try and fix it. What do you want me to say? We are, we do have four kids from the Summer Youth Program, so that, that's how we're doing it this summer. They're, this is fun. You know, we had it last year, and I would recommend it to every department. It's really a good time to have them now, but it's, it's only gonna fix it for the summer.
With your teaching background.
Yeah.
Having us, having us...
I like the kids.
Yeah, having youth there and, I think that would be...
Well, it's kind of refreshing to, you know, you have kids that have never had jobs before, and they're just, they're, they're funny, you know? And they're fun both, you know, it's really neat. A lot of them have never had a job and they've never interviewed or anything. They don't even know what to say to me when they call to ask for an interview. It's just, they tell their, that name, and then there's this long silence, you know? They're like, I know they're asked, they're kind of saying, "What do we do next"? It's cute.
Well, that's a lot of responsibility, you being their first work experience.
I hope I don't fail them.
You better make it good, so they come back for more.
The County Home is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for two positions of part-time attendance, number fifteen, four, which one, these positions are being posted until...
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming over. No, my mic is, I think, starting briefly, so this is simply bringing some of the part-time part-time...
The Department is requesting the board approve hiring Lee Stanford to the position of part-time driver, number twenty-two, ten dash one, to be effective June twenty-ninth, two thousand and fifteen, at a rate of twelve dollars, sixty-four cents per hour. After the successful completion of the one-thousand-hour probationary period, the rate will increase to thirteen dollars, thirty cents per hour.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Jerry.
Good morning. Hi, Jerry. Our first item here is we have property on Washington Street that they're having some issues with their septic system. They have a forest main that runs from Auburn Lakes along Washington Street to Haskins and dumps into the, the tank with, sewer system in Tankwood that then goes down to our McFarland plant. Currently, that property is in a no server, on lot service only designation of the two-oh-eight, and they're requesting that that property be exchanged over to a maybe sewer so that they can tie into that forest main. Bainbridge Township approved that on the ninth of June, amend, amend that to, the two-oh-eight.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and amend the Bainbridge Township two-oh-eight water quality management plan to change the designation of permanent parcel zero-two, two-eight-eight, three-zero-zero, code debit nine-two-six-eight, Washington Street from no service to maybe sewers as requested by the Bainbridge Township trustee.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Commissioner.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Kelly, do we, did one of us forget to sign something?
No, I had to correct the number on here, so I threw up another one, and my printer died right after about one else.
I'll just get there. I'll make a copy and we'll do it.
Thank you, sorry about that.
The next two items, the first one is we have, well, we have an opening for an operator position at our Merritt Road Plant for one of our route operators. And Benny Polarchek, who's one currently within our maintenance staff, has applied for that position. He is highly qualified for that position. He's, we'll be sad to lose him out of the maintenance side, but he's highly qualified for that operator position. He'll probably be able to do a little more, having the, with the maintenance background, he'll be able to do a little more at the plants, at that plant also, so. He's gonna be, we're asking for him to be promoted or take the position of operator one. And then in place of that, because, because we'll be down enough of maintenance worker asking the route to advertise for that maintenance position.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board classify Bernard Polarchek to the position of maintenance operator one, number two-three-two-six, to be effective June twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, at his current rate of pay. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for the position of maintenance worker number two-three-three-zero at the Merritt Road Garage. This position will be made posted until build.
I'll make those motions.
Second?
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here to ask for you to approve the addendum to the lease that we have with the Commissioners. It's for one-two-five-five-seven Ravenwood Drive. I don't know if you know the history of this building, but I'm not sure exactly how it came to be, that we went together with the senior center to build the building. It, our portion of it was built with monies from the Malhealth State Department and with some funding. We have a hundred-year lease, and I think we're like in year twenty-nine. What we'd like to do is sublease about forty square feet of the, about nine, nine thousand, five hundred square feet to a pharmacy. It will be a pharmacy primarily for our clients. The idea behind it is to help them be more medication compliant and improve their stability. They tend to have a lifespan without twenty-five years, less than people without experimental illness, and this integrated kind of care is geared toward helping them live longer and a better quality of life. I am nervous.
Are we that tough?
Woo! Is there any questions about it? There's a lot I can say about this, but I didn't want to take a lot of your time.
I have a couple of questions.
Great.
I apologize to you, I didn't pick up on this, or I should have asked you questions before you walked in here, but how is it determined who is gonna provide that pharmacy service?
I went with a pharmacy called Genoa, and they specialize in this kind of care. They really target community mental health centers and federally qualified health centers to provide the care. This is what they do. They're not like a CBS, they really understand our clients and they gear their services toward that. I talked to a lot of other agencies and their CEOs who have used this, a lot, me and you and three. Coleman Center in Portage County, Beacon Health in Lake County, and Ashville County. They have a great reputation, and I just felt like they would be the most qualified.
Was there some sort of a bid process? What was the process? You just picked one, not the show?
We interviewed people and, yeah.
And so they're a for-profit organization?
They are for-profit.
Are they paying you to be in this space?
Yes. We, we went with a fair market value kind of equation. I had two real estate agents on my board, and I went with their commercial property people and came up with a price we thought was fair.
If, if this was stated, it didn't sink in, so I'm gonna hear with me. The area that's gonna be a pharmacy.
Yes.
What hours will it be open?
It'll be open, the hours we are, we haven't made an exact determination. It'll probably be like an eight-thirty to five with one evening available.
And so it won't have a drive-in window and somebody after hours, after you'll walk into the lobby to walk into the pharmacy?
Exactly, yes. They'll, they'll have a window off our lobby.
Right.
But inside, yeah.
Right. Okay, thank you. So this resolution is, is doing after more than authorizing a change in use?
Yes.
It's not necessarily authorizing the pharmacy, it's not authorizing who you selected, but it's just authorizing the change in use. Is there a pharmacy across the street, by the way, in the hospital or not?
Anywhere that we can utilize. Aye.
Okay.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute the addendum to lease between Jagger County Board Commissioner and Ravenwood Mental Health Center, enlending the conditions of use for a portion of the building located at one-two-five-five-seven Ravenwood Drive, Charlotte.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
Aye.
Mr. Speaker.
But one, one more question as you're leaving. Is this open to the public? Can the public walk in there and get...
They could. It will not be advertised to the public, it's not something that they're looking for. They don't want that kind of business in particular. It, it will be our clients, and I imagine staff on occasion might use it.
But theoretically, the seniors are in the same building. If they wanted to come up and use the pharmacy, it's a convenience for the seniors that happen to be in the building, so.
Absolutely.
And if the hospital docs want to come across the street and use the pharmacy, they can use the pharmacy and so forth.
Yes, yes, it is open to public.
So essentially, what you're saying is it's a full, full...
It's a full-service pharmacy.
Service phar, I mean, they may not sell Christmas presents in there in November or some other things that the pharmacy's around.
And it won't have a store that you can go in and look for Band-Aids or anything. It'll just have the window where you can take your prescription. They will have some aspirin and that sort of thing available, but it won't be like in the shopping.
Are they part of a formal program like Easy Skips or CBS has got their subscription service and so on and so forth?
I know that they contract with almost all the healthcare companies and have that sort of thing. I don't know about mail-in, I actually didn't ask that. They do things like bubble packs for our clients, if you're familiar with that. Clients who have trouble tracking their meds, they will do those kinds of things and fill meta-planners and...
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute the contract agreement with LB Architects, L.B., to furnish project startup programming and space planning for the existing Jagger County Courthouse basement renovation project, and further approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the proposal in an amount of fifteen, three thousand dollars.
Do you want to speak to this or do you want me to speak to this so the public knows what's going on?
Yeah.
Okay, just so everybody knows what's going on, an item nineteen. The, the courts have asked and, and were agreeing with this to bring in an architect to take a look at the design layout, to move probate officers to the basement of the courthouse building, and also to look at the condensation of the law library, which already exists in that area, so we're gonna be looking at a redesign there. And so this is just the process of taking a look at that. If anybody who's visited probate, most people in...
I mean, a shop or.
Are they part of a formal program, like Easy Scripts, or CBS has got their subscription service and so on and so forth?
I know that they contract with almost all the healthcare companies and, and have that sort of thing. I don't know about mail-in, I actually didn't ask that. They do things like bubble packs for our clients, if you're familiar with that. Clients who have trouble tracking their meds, they will do those kinds of things, and bill meta-planners and.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the contract agreement with LB Architects, L.L.B., to furnish project startup programming and space planning for the existing Jagger County Courthouse basement renovation project, and further approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the proposal in an amount of fifteen, three thousand dollars.
Do you want to speak to this, or do you want me to speak to this, so the public knows what's going on?
Yeah.
Okay, just, just so everybody knows what's going on, on item nineteen. The, the courts have asked, and, and were agreeing with this, to bring in an architect to take a look at the design layout, to move probate officers to the basement of the court building, and also to look at the accommodation of the law library, which already exists in that area, so we're going to be look, looking at a redesign there, and so this is just the process of, of taking a look at that. Anybody who's visited probate, most people in the street probably don't have a reason to do that, but if you had ever done that, you would see that the current probate offices have issues, security and otherwise, and so we're accommodating the courts and, and moving this forward to, to improve their situation, so. If you have any questions on that, because that's what it's about. It's, it's actually probation office, the probation office. Yeah, no, that's, that's fine, I. Not probate, that's right, I said probation. You said probate, yeah, no, it's, well, it starts out the same, just finishes differently. The probation office. Yeah, probation, yeah. And they're currently on, at, at the Opera House. At the Opera House. And they only have two offices. They also have three offices in the court, but it's disconnected and so on and so forth, so, but, so anyway, for anybody interested.
Motion.
You read it, okay, I'll move.
Second. Commissioner Reer.
Aye.
Mr. Spiller.
Aye.
Mr. Claywell.
Aye.
Mr. Claywell.
Thank you.
You have a nice day. Yellow is everybody, and red is.
Yellow is everybody's.
It's good. Where do I, say this little puppy? It's Frank.
We'll fix it, just make it, and just make it go over top, so. There were several that we had to fix in that one. Two seconds.
Okay.
Well, it's a copy, so.
Do you have any questions?
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board appoint Blake A. Reer, David Blair as alternate, and Walter Emmerich Paul Shapen Sharr as alternate, as Ohio Public Works Commissioner of D.C., District Southern County Representatives, for a three-year term